We are being overrun by somebody with money with things that none of y'all want. I mean, there's a lot of seniors in here and you didn't come down here with this kind of bullshit. I mean, this is ridiculous, y'all are being treated that way. And we have to get in touch with the Senate and the House of Representatives.
I think the Senator is quite amenable to talking through all of these kinds of problems. And he understands the dilemma we face. He understands the voting rights issues. He understands the corruption issues that we approach to him. I think Mr. Kennedy has a good relationship with him. I've talked to his chief of staff a number of times. So, I think we've opened the communications channels.
Cover them up with letters.
But first, we gotta get a petition and we got a few steps.
Do all of that and bug 'em to death with letters and...
We will.
Calls.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You all may know me, I'm Pat Lady. I'm not here, but I can go ahead and add her age too. On your paperwork, you've got a big question on tax session. One of the things is what they had done with the... You may read it. In the 15s, they told Bosch to finance the completion of Port Mansfield and the East Cut. The county opposed a tax to pay for this debt. And they didn't pay it off. However, the taxes were canceled. Okay? Number one, who's getting the money back? If it's the county. And if it's the county, how come we're not receiving anything? Because let's face it, the cut has needed to be redone. Other work has needed to be done. After 75 years, where's that money and what's happening to it? If it goes to the county, that's great. I don't care. But there's money...
No, it stays right here.
Okay.
That's the tax.
That's the tax from...
That's the yearly amount of that tax.
That's a percentage of the tax we're paying. Well, we're not getting all of it. We can't have it.
No.
So, after 75 years, there's money floating around someplace. You know? Where? Somebody's gotta answer for that. And if cash goes to the county or a part of it goes to us, well, that's one thing. But whose pockets are sitting in? And that's a long time. And when Bob and I first moved here, one of the questions that we asked, well, it's the Chamber of Commerce because that was a big thing there before the district as far as what was going on when we first came. And we've been here over 25 years. And it was, we've always done it that way. Well, folks, we may be at the tail end of nowhere, but let's face it, this is the 21st century. And we all don't work with our regular telephones. We all work on computers or Kindles or whatever's going on because Kindles are working, invested by library. But, folks, we need to... My kids and my grandkids are much more aware of what's going on in the world than I am. And that doesn't mean that I'm not paying attention. But it does mean that I'm trying to catch up. And I have education, an advanced education, and I've ran a number of clinics. I've dealt with that, a number of government boards with the work that I did. I've been a military wife, so I understand all that bullshit too. So, please, think about what's going on. We've got over 100 people here. Now, that's great, but that's only a quarter of the population of the port. Yes, a lot of it is abroad. It's a holiday weekend. But start to think about where some of this money's going for. And the Navigation District is a legal Texas state situation. Then they have to release those information to us on freedom of information. If they don't, we could get a lawyer to go and get them to be upfront with us. We can't make decisions with only half the information.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I wanted to say one thing really quick because for about six months, we've been trying to get through the Open Records Act, an understanding of how much of this money, if we lose it, how much we actually paid into it. So, we're gonna get a little bit of a windfall back because we pay this tax. Everybody in the county, in the Navigation District, Greeceans, pay. And that's what it adds up to. So, we pay a portion of that. And we couldn't get anyone to tell us how much we paid. And I think Mr. Kennedy and his wife have both have been in the assessor's office. I've been in the assessor's office. We've been in the tax collector's office. And finally, this past week, a very helpful fellow in the assessor's office, Bobby Rodriguez, came up with the numbers that we've been asking for. And the numbers tell you something. It's an interesting piece of information. That the total market valuation of all properties in Port Mansfield is about $93 million. The taxable portion, the taxable, total taxable property in Port Mansfield, so, is $83 million because you don't set that value as the same as the market value. You set the taxable valuation. If you multiply the... Do I get by 100? And multiply the 0.83利率 used to tax everyone in the county to raise this money, it comes out to $72,000. So, that's a little windfall we're getting. But the important thing it shows is, is that we are 1% of the population of Willacy County, which is about 20,000 people. We are 300 and something people under the census, right? 1%, but yet that $72,000 is 11% of that. So, we've been punching above our weight for a long time, not only in contributing to this number, but contributing to county taxes. And that's an important thing to feel because we are often denigrated from Raymondville as not paying our way. We're paying more than our weight and have been paying more than our weight. Any other questions?
Mark Brown, I'm 52. So, I might be one of the oldest here, but maybe he'll maybe... But what's gonna happen to the public facility as far as... They're a taxing entity.
What's going to happen to the Public Utility District? Don't know. The Public Utility District is the water and sewer establishment that takes care of our town.
They take care of our crap.
Yeah. And it was created by the legislature.
We want to keep them. They do a...
Yeah.
They're not without fault in some places, but they do a pretty good job.
I have no problem with it, but all I'm saying is that that horse is behind the cart. The cart here is that we don't have somebody to make the decision about that because we're not a municipality. But my thought on it is the same as yours. I think the PUD is valuable. It has a structure that's cohesive. They have a lot of good guys who want to go and serve on it. But its budget, hold on a second, its budget is fair game. Ron Mills' home allowance is in the PUD budget. That's wrong. Ron Mills' car allowance is in the PUD budget. That's wrong. So, it has to be straightened out.
It has to be straightened out. But that's a big question.
Yeah.
And what about your lease fee? You've got it up here at $500,000. Now, is that gonna be converted to a tax rate when municipality takes over? I assume it wouldn't.
I think that we know part of the answer to that question. If you convert all the property, if all the property is transferred to the municipality, it comes with the requirement to fill that piece of the budget. Right. So, initially, you could bring that lease fee over. The question is, you have to ask the legislature, if we're a municipality, can we continue this lease fee? Or can we call it a homeowners association fee? And that has to be worked out.
Because that $500,000, it converts, it would convert, I haven't figured, to about 70 cent tax rate to generate that on an $83 million. I don't know. Anybody else did this? The tax rate to generate, and I just figured it one time, so I could be wrong, but on the $83 million to generate, that's what you said, the valuation, right?
Yeah, the taxable valuation.
Okay. To generate $500,000, you gotta generate $500,000 out of $83 million.
And I can't think of a...
And I was just going off of an 8 cent rate. To generate 8 cent rate, you're gonna have to go about eight times that if you go to the tax rate to generate that $500,000. We're gonna need that $500,000 if you go to that. I mean...
I agree.
And is the hotel...
There's no particular reason why it would be canceled if you were... If the legislature decided to move the assets and land of the Navigation District to the municipality, no one would be standing up to say, hey, we don't want that lease money. Initially, we'd have to have it to have a fiscal, fiscally sound budget.
Well, and hey, everybody, if you're off the water, you probably like your lease fee because it's not a big amount. But then if you got a $500,000 on the backside there at that 70 cent rate, you're gonna pay a big...
I'm just throwing out some points.
It would be nice to keep our lease fee. And is the hotel motel tax, is it controlled by the county? And would it still be controlled by the county? Does Raymondville pay? They pay hotel motel taxes. They go through the county.
Yeah, all I can tell you real quick is that in one conversation with Judge Gettle, we got to the end of the conversation, which was about the municipality stuff. And he says, oh, by the way, when you go out there, tell the chamber, I'm sorry, I could only give them $8,000 this year. And it wasn't because...
We're not getting our share.
Yeah. It wasn't because that was our share. Our share was much more. It was because he was poor mouthing it over all the things he has to fund under the county budget. But if we're gonna give him back that, you don't think he can give us back some of that? I think it's a pretty fair negotiation.
Legally, legally, the county does initially give it. I've done the research on it. But they're obligated to give it back to us. And if we give it back to the municipality, not to the chamber. And the municipality would decide, as long as it's within the requirements of it being bringing the business into town, the mayor, whatever, would decide what to do with it.
There you go. The municipality was controlled.
So, are you two years away now from going to the legislature? We'd have to go through the general's regular session.
Give me that.
Anyway, I'm just asking some questions. And then the Navigation District, in the last four years, due to some mismanagement by Mr. Mills and three of our members, has incurred a hell of a lot of debt, okay? Are they gonna be able to pay that debt back in two years? Or is the municipality gonna have to inherit that debt? I'm talking about they're gonna be in a, probably in a deficit, and they're gonna have to go to the bank and borrow some money. To pay.
You're a little bit beyond my capability here because what I heard Ron Mills say at the last budget meeting was that he was all lined up to get a bank loan or a line of credit that would cover intermittent shortfalls. Because in the grand scheme of things, in the grand scheme of these things, this money was gonna come in. And somebody might be slow to pay, and there would be a shortfall. But the big numbers, I...
$600,000 you're gonna owe Phase 1 is not... And I don't think they have the money to do that. They've committed...
They've got committed tax dollars of 8.7. That's what they said in front of, on the board.
I don't think they've paid the highway percentage yet either. They're gonna have to go to the bank and get that. Who's gonna assume that?
Or a bridge. Well, it's not a debt. It's a bridge loan that is covered in the end in the accounting, in the accounting of the project by this month. That's what he said.
The navigation's gonna owe that.
Huh?
The navigation's gonna owe that.
What was the earlier one that he would recognize?
Well, had a bunch of motel tax.
Yeah. Motel tax can prepare that.
It's gonna do what?
At least the PUD.
Maybe they're dead. We were just talking about that. Motel tax, tax paper.
No, I appreciate it. This is what we have to sort out if we go into a three-month campaign.
Hi, my name's Tacy Bosser. We've owned a home here since 2006, I think. I think that's when it was. And we are currently trying to spend over 50% of our time here with hopes to spend more in the future. And we came here because we love this place. We love what it is. We love the people. We love the Laguna Madre. We love the beach. We love everything about it. And we want to keep it this way, that everybody came here to live and be around. I've got a couple of questions. And one is, do we know what the process is that would be involved in changing from, if we became a municipality and we wanted to change from being leasehold owners to owning our real estate? Do we know what that process is?
No. We invented it. We'll be in charge of it. If the land and the assets of the Navigation District are transferred to the city of Port Mansfield, it'll be up to the council, the mayor and the council to decide a process, first of all, clear its policy, for instance, that residential leases will start with those. This was a question, I was hoping Mr. Ramirez would be here today, but I intend to ask you. I think if you devise a process, everybody who's got a residential piece of land could put in an application to change it from leasehold to deeded property, and the council vote on it. And you have to make sure in doing that, that you've thought about what Mark was just talking about. What are you doing with your leasehold revenues? And so, you have to look at it in the total fiscal picture. We may need a few years of transition before we can do that. But they can make a policy statement that that's where we're going.
Okay. The other thing is, do we know, and this might be a question for Eric and Steve back there, do we know if you two guys would be allowed to put, would we be allowed to run y'all as mayor and councilman? Or are y'all not allowed to do that as being on the board of the Willacy County Navigation District? Do we know the answer to that?
I'm just guessing. They can shake their heads. I don't think they can be in two places at once, right? And it would be great if we could make a transition like that. But the problem is, if we get a municipality in an election, say toward the end of this year, right? And then that's our starting point for our mayor and alderman to go to Austin to start the process of negotiating the transfer, the dismantlement of the Navigation District. If they made that transition over and went for us, that means Ron Mills is going to appoint the two replacements for them. And they're gonna be in the chase car.
They do have to drop out to be able to do this. We know that.
I believe that. I believe that.
We know that, Eric.
Disagree. Huh?
Mario Teorino was a Raymondville Board, School Board member when he became the county commissioner and he came to vote.
Right. And Mario told me that if he was gonna go for the Navigation District, he had to get off the county commission.
One other thing is, and this is just because I heard this from a friend, so I know that it's something that's out there being talked about and rumored, and I was hoping that you could probably put that rumor to what rest, is I heard a friend ask me, say, we've heard that they're gonna make us re-buy our real estate. Can you quell that?
I can't imagine a scenario where somebody would ask them to buy their, re-buy their, on what basis would... No. So, let me say, no, we're trying to do this in a tax-neutral, cost-neutral way to make this transition. We don't want to do it if it's gonna cost people money, though. There's not gonna be two governments taxing people. One of my friends, I'll just say this real quickly because I don't think anyone's interested in it. One of my friends asked me, he said, you ought to say, because some people think that you're just trying to run for mayor and take over this place. I've put my two years in. I'm not running, I wouldn't run for any of this. I'll be a resident here and a good citizen and give my two cents if anybody wants them, but I'm not gonna run for anything. I think there are lots of great people in this town, in this town. And then one of the things that hurts about the way the Navigation District treats us is that contentious show of lack of confidence that we can have self-love. All right. Another good question.
As far as revenue streams, if we're a municipality, we have the right to put 2% sales tax on?
I believe that's true. I think we have an option about when it starts. So, if we won the election, we have a mayor and whatnot, but we're a city in name only, we don't want to start with a tax. I wouldn't. You know, municipalities, you could automatically take the sales tax, retail sales tax from 6% to 8%. So, it would mean, you know, the Dr. Pepper costs more from Syll and the Bay cost more a little bit. But most of the shopping that counts is, the sales tax is not a big factor, like the property tax or the leasehold tax. So, I think we have the option to defer. I've read that somewhere. But I wouldn't swear to it. The first time I told Syll about it, she says, oh, we can get 2% more. But she was talking, you know, for the municipality. Okay. All right. I keep pushing it up on people. I need to do it on myself.
Well, when I stopped, I'll contribute out. I noticed that when I pay my taxes, that my lots are taxed. But then I'm taxed again, again for the improvements. And then I pay a leasehold fee for my leases, the land that I purchased. And that's problematic for me. I don't know. Though, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I would be in favor of us having deeded property. It's making it harder to sell. People are hearing about what's going on here. People don't like that there's all this turmoil. It makes property hard to sell. That's all I got to say.
I think people agree with that, yeah. The, one of the most secret documents in Willacy County, I've been told in the tax offices, is the demand in the reply, the demand from the county tax authorities to the Navigation District several, a couple of years ago, I'm not sure how long ago, to explain the justification today for the leasehold structure in Port Mansfield. And a reply was written, and it went actually to those tax offices. And I've asked for a copy, and I've been waiting for a year. And I ask for it every time I go in. Have you found that copy of that letter? Not yet. Not yet. So, I don't know. Maybe Mark could address this question of, historically, why has that been so important to hold on to that? Is it just because of revenue? Or is it a notion that Port Mansfield, in the biggest sense, is a big asset? That someday the county might have an opportunity, Elon Musk sashes through town, to sell it to somebody who's got the money and who could fulfill the Charles Johnson dreams of covering this place with development? What was the justification? Is it just a revenue thing? Mark, have you got any?
Why there are different revenues on lease fees?
No. Why we are leasehold properties? They took it under eminent domain from the King Ranch. They could have taken it as property and sold it as property to people.
Well, you know, everybody knows the history. It came from, you know, started with American Legion. They gave it back to the nation. And they, you know, the county organized the Navigation District, and they, they could, it was organized, almost impossible, okay? I don't have it in front of me or anything, where they couldn't sell the land. So, they had to, the only way they could get, because there was a bunch of houses already here.
Right.
And they took it over. So, they came up with this, they couldn't give them a deed.
Yeah.
Way up to set up. They set up this lease.
I think that an interesting thought exercise, I think, is that if you think about it, the Navigation District took this land by eminent domain, and they've never paid property taxes on it. We paid property taxes on it, even though we don't own our property, right?
That's because it's political subdivision, they don't have to pay taxes.
Right. Okay. Just like a big farmer. Okay. So, we pay, but we do pay their property taxes. Well, because we pay those property taxes, you could make the legal argument that that ought to be my deeded property if I'm paying property taxes, right? Now, here's the kicker to that. What is the leasehold on top of it about? So, the double taxation, people that worried about our level of taxation, that's a kind of a double taxation, isn't it? Not only paying it as a deeded property, as a property tax, now they got a leasehold over here too. You're paying twice. Now, it's a good deal for the Navigation District, and you can, I'm sure some lawyer can give a nifty explanation about it, but it is a double tax.
Would be my understanding is that the leasehold would go to the Navigation District to pay for the workers that work. That would be my understanding of that.
Well, don't the money that's collected from us under the property tax goes to pay, goes here, which pays the workers, right? I told Mark, it's a very interesting question, that the creators of the Navigation District, they didn't leave a great archive.
This Navigation District was never set up to be a residential port, okay? It was set up to be a commercial port. And that became the problem for us residents is because it's now, it's nothing but a residential port now. And that's why, that's why you got a good point in governing yourself now, governing ourselves in a residence. I'm not a resident here, but...
But I like the story. Mark Brown, if I may, tell the story that his dad dragged a camp house up here when there was just a dirt road for 186.
Still there.
And that's when Charles Johnson was, he was not very popular because he didn't like this riffraff coming up to fish, right? And putting structures, right, in the town. In and making it town.
He wanted to, he wanted basically to take our lease away from them. So, my dad said, well, I'm just not gonna pay the lease. And he said, and just become a squatter. And he did that till 58. And finally, they said, well...
Hard to the people.
We're gonna come and carry our house. I still have that lease. It's in the doorway of that old house we have over there, which I think may be the oldest house in Port Mansfield. But anyway.
History. Yeah. History. The better we understand it, the better decisions I think we're gonna make. Questions? Carol? No? I've got one? No? All right. Oh, here we go. Fine.
I just want to say thank you, Todd.
I just want to say thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Patrick Tyler, for all the work.
And I feel like thanking again our two commissioners who are here because we give them hell. But I watch them and they're, they're working hard with what they got. And now I'd like to introduce you to Mr., Mr. Beach Cleanup and a great friend, businessman, Tim.
Miller Bosler. Thank you, Patrick. Miller Bosler. And as Kathy said, we've been here about since two thousand and six. And Brown, you've been here almost, where are you, Brown? About as long as I've been taking air. That's a long time, fifty-two. And one final comment about the comments, you don't need to run from there. We all know, we all know that. So I've got a, just a couple of things to, to say. I'm going to get the, the, to the crux of the matter right, right quick. We've, we've been attending these meetings routinely, not like Jack Thicke. We've been to a number of them. And not once is that little room that is full at the Navigation District offices on Wells Fargo Bank, a little small room where these commissioners do their work, is there anybody from anywhere except Port Mansfield? The only people that care about what's going on. No as far as, no greater Raymondville. If they are, I don't know about. And I think most of everybody in here would agree with me that that's a, a correct assessment. But let's be truthful about what we really care about. To the person, to the man, the woman, the kid. We care about this fishery. That's why we're here. That's what this is about. That district, now governed by three from outer Willacy County, is bound and determined to bring a container port to this community. They're still working on it, right now. And Steve Kennedy and Eric Kennedy are busting their ass to keep it from happening and manage a very tough situation. And my hat's off to both of y'all, not only for being here today and listening to this, but for doing what you're doing. Thank you very much. I'm not done. You get the final word. So we, we want this fishery to stay as pristine as it is. That's why the Marshs Tousys and the Riles Tousys, bless his heart, he's no longer with us. And the Terry Mills, Walter Kielburgers, on and on and on. Wayne Davises, Ringy Hinosas carve a living out of this fishery. It's special. And we're all about keeping it special, aren't we, Mike and Brian? We're all going to keep it special. And that ain't going to happen with a barge container port. And they're still sniffing around and wanting to do it. So I encourage you to hear the mutiny out. Let's see where it goes. We're not voting for that today. We're voting, Patrick's going to tell you about it in a little bit. But there's lots of diligence that we will be done before it ever goes to a vote. We put a mayor and an alderman in place if it happens. So I'll, unanswered questions? Hopefully today we've...